President.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Thank you, sir. If you will join me for prayer and pledge. Lord, we're meeting today to cook matters of business. Get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your sup- impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, mayor's comments. Item five, approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
First, Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? Mr. Ross.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
We'll move to item six, citizens' comments.
None tonight.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, public announcements, awards, and recognition.
Yes, sir. Just want to address everyone and thank you for everyone coming out to the July 3rd celebration. Our drone that we had fly up did a guesstimate of approximately twenty-eight thousand people within the city. I just want to say thank you to all the sponsors, the vendors, all the spectators, and especially to some of the staff. Rachel Jones, Ethan Greer, Maria Bruce, Tricia Steele, all the Public Works guys, the Fire Department and Police Department. And I'm sure I'm forgetting a couple, but it could not have happened without the help of all those individuals. It was a complete buy-in by staff. We worked hand in hand for days before and it was at least a seventeen, eighteen-hour day that day, but it was a great event. It was a little warm, but it was well received by everyone. The next event that we have is on July the twenty-seventh. It's gonna be the Back to School Bash here at City Hall. It's an event that we take pride in. It's where we give filled backpacks to kids within the city limits. And obviously, we're not gonna turn down any children either. So if you'd like to come out and get a backpack filled with school supplies, the event is going to be from nine AM until eleven AM here at City Hall. We'll have a few local businesses on hand giving out some school supplies as well. And then we're also still accepting vendors and sponsors for Nature Fest, which is on September the twenty-first. That's all I'll have tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, staff, we, I mean, board. We, I wanna just congratulate Richard and staff. I felt like it was just an extraordinary event last week. Only that we're just really busy closing out the year. We go from budget season to audit season and it just keeps on moving around. But I'm real excited. We've got a lot of projects going on. It seems like you can't drive down the road without seeing dirt. So it's, I think we're in an unprecedented time right now, and I just appreciate everybody's support, staff, the board, and we're just looking forward to outstanding fiscal year twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Old Johnson. Any discussion? Mr. Ross.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Item ten, old business. A, rezoning of seventy-one thirteen Hill Hughes Road. We will open the public hearing for that item. So if there is anyone here to speak on the public hearing for the rezoning seventy-one thirteen Hill Hughes Road?
Hi, I'm Annette Belier.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So right now, and I'll close it. I don't think there's anyone else coming. We'll move now to the actual business item. So seeing none, we'll move from the public hearing. We'll go to item two. Second and final reading, ordinance twenty-two-four oh-nine, an ordinance to amend the zoning onto the Sea of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning two-point-five-nine acres of property located at seventy-one thirteen Hill Hughes Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map Twenty-two, parcel seventy-one point oh-one from RS forty, single-family residential to R twenty, one and two-family residential, property owner Annette Belier. So welcome, Ms. Belier.
Second.
Johnson. McDonald. Any additional discussion? Mr. Greer.
This rezoning received a unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission with a seven-oh vote. There were two members that were absent. And it also received a staff recommendation for approval as well.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions or discussion from the board? Mr. Ross.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero. Old Business, item ten B, resolution thirty-two dash twenty-four, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners approving a schedule change for November twenty-fourth meeting dates. Mayor Anderson?
I'll make a motion to defer until she's back with us and we'll set it at the next meeting.
Second.
Motion for defer. Johnson, McDonald. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Ross.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Motion for defer carries four-zero. We'll move to new business. Item eleven A, ordinance twenty-two-four dash twelve, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning four-point-five-two acres of property located at seven-one-zero-three Wiley Circle, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map, zero-four-two-H, Group C, parcel zero-zero-eight, from C-one Commercial Zoning District to CMU Commercial Mixed Use Zoning District. Property owner, Wiley Circle Investments. Mr. Greer.
This item received a positive recommendation for approval with a seven-oh vote from the Planning Commission. There were two members that were absent. And it also received a positive recommendation from our staff.
Thank you, sir. Anyone like to make a motion?
Anyone here representing the?
We have representation for this reason. Please come forward. If you could, state your name for me, sir.
Adam Ellsworth from Hickory Capital Group.
Thank you, sir. You have any additional discussion or comments to add or any questions for the applicant?
I do. You said you're with Hickory Capital Group?
Yes, sir.
What relation do they have with Wiley Circle Investment?
We have it under contract. Wiley Circle Investment is the seller and we are the buyer.
Okay. And what are y'all's plans with the property?
We plan to put a self-storage facility.
Is the, did the, did the question about the current structure ever get answered? Is it classified historical?
At this time, the current structure on the property is not classified as a historical structure.
Do y'all have any plans to keep that structure?
We do not. I believe it's an abandoned church.
Is your entrance gonna be off of Wiley Circle?
It is. Oh, no, excuse me. It's off Fairview Boulevard.
It's gonna be off of Fairview Boulevard?
Correct. That's where most of the traffic will come through.
That's about like a driveway now. You gonna widen it to make it like a road or something?
Correct. So right now, it's a single driveway up. We'd have to widen it, pave it.
Okay.
I was, I serve on the Planning Commission as well, so this isn't the first time that I've put thought into this, although it's from a different perspective here. And putting thought into it, looking at the commercial center designation that the twenty-forty plan has in that area. And I was reading through kind of our twenty-forty plan dives into that commercial center designation on what, what that, what fits into that. And I'll just read it rather short appropriately, and it says retail, restaurant, office, light industrial, multi-family, mixed-use development, civic or institutional. Development character says centered around a key intersections, building setback from corridor, limited parking, and some of those obviously fit. When I think about centered around key intersections, just the whole thought of key intersection and storage unit, in my mind, don't really go well together. Especially as our city continues to grow. I know there's property to the other side of the city center development that is one day. Who knows when that may be. Would eventually continue to expand that way. And then just in my mind, I'm thinking that, you know, you're eventually gonna get to the point where you have sidewalk, restaurants, cafes, stuff like that, and then just a storage unit that is in the middle of all of that. From a planning perspective, personally, I think it belongs more on the outside of the city, more than like the industrial park areas as far as storage units go. But just my interpretation of what commercial center is supposed to be, I don't personally see storage units fitting into that the way I'd like it to.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, modern self-storage, which is what we're doing here, is a lot different than I think what a lot of people have in mind with traditional self-storage. Traditional self-storage is a large field of basically garage doors and a lot of separate buildings. This is one building, all internal, climate-controlled, self-storage units. I think first-generation self-storage, you would put them back in an industrial park, but for the past fifteen years or so, you put them where the people are. Put them closer to retail, closer to grocery stores, closer to big box, so people have access to them. A lot more people use storage now than they did historically. Which is why we put all of our deals closer to the retail centers and where the traffic is. If we were building, again, kind of a sea of garage doors, that could cause problems, but what we build is, again, modern, all internal. And it's pretty low traffic, too, so it's not gonna have too much of an impact.
How many square feet is your building?
Right now, it's seventy-six across two stories, but we're gonna, we plan to build into the hill. So it's basically gonna be a bi-level product where you can access both the first and second floor at grade level. If you've driven by the site recently, obviously, you know it's, it's on a hill. We naturally, we'd have to have a setback anyway from Fairview Boulevard, but because of basically the drainage ditch and a couple easements, we have to go even further back. So we're gonna be pretty set back and tucked in there and away from right up front to the main thoroughfare. Self-storage development, if I can add one more thing, it follows the growth. So it follows housing, apartments, population growth, good median household incomes. Self-storage people usually come in after a lot of that has been established, hence why we're looking here at this site. Which actually is a, I think we discussed it last time, it's a relatively difficult site to develop, just given the topography, setbacks, easements, the shape, as you can see, I don't even know if you'd call that a trapezoid or what it is, but it's got a few challenges. And we think that our plan fits well into it.
How many other sites did you look at?
Five, maybe? Maybe six? Some are priced too high, some are too big. This one, just given the fact, again, that it is tucked back. It is four-point-five-two acres. We can only use about half of it, given the easements and natural slope.
Did you look at any two-acre sites?
Pardon?
Did you look at any two-acre sites?
I don't recall if we actually looked at any exactly two-acre sites. I'm not sure.
One thing that I would like to note is that the request was for commercial mixed use. Currently, within our zoning districts, we have C-one through seven that replaced commercial general. And within that C-one through seven, self-storage is not available as a C-one through seven item. It is only available as a permitted use within commercial mixed use, industrial general, and industrial restrictive. So there are only three zoning districts for Mr. Ellsworth to accomplish what he would like to do, for him to request. CMU is one of those, and that is why it is a commercial mixed use request tonight.
That's one thing. The C-one to CMU, they're fairly similar. There's, I guess, some additional uses you gain from going to CMU. So from going from CMU to C-one, you would have an opportunity, if this was rezoned, to be automotive parking, outdoor material and equipment sales and repair, self-service storage, warehousing, good, transport and storage, and wholesale sales. And so that things pick up. There's some other uses, I guess, that would be conditional uses that would have to be approved. But all of those uses feel more to me like industrial or higher impact, I guess, not necessarily city center or, you know, the characteristics of the architecture in the twenty-forty plan there talk about, if I can find it on my notes, walkability, connectivity. And then, of course, right next to this parcel is a city center overlay future use in our twenty-forty plan. Then the one next parcel over is where city centers are being developed right now. And so I kinda see, as city center expands out, and then that electrical easement right there, the TVA electrical easement, is the start of our greenway coming out of Bowie Park into the city center. So I would imagine or envision it would continue to come out. So to me, the feel of a greenway coming out and then running into storage or warehousing is just different to me. It doesn't necessarily feel that fit. I agree with you. Storage units are needed. I just don't know about that area. That's what I'm trying to figure out with that zoning for me. And then I think that building was built in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. It's not protected, but it's an old building. I think it's one of the oldest buildings in Fairview.
I didn't know that it was built in the early nineteen hundreds. I thought it was-
The tax record says nineteen hundred on it when I looked it up, but, so I don't know the exact date, but it's unfortunate the state that it's currently being treated in, but-
It is, last time we were here, we pulled up with our project manager, and there's actually a squatter in there. Which I let you know about.
Take note back there. I don't think I have a motion yet. If anyone likes to make a motion.
I will make, I will make a motion to deny.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to add to, to the point you came back with what I had to say, and I appreciate your response. I don't disagree with anything you said. I think we do need it, and I think the internal climate-controlled storage is something that, you know, we don't have that. We don't have that to offer our citizens in this town. You went on to say, you know, next to some big-box stores, stuff like that, and I understand land is for sale here and there. It's not like you can pick and choose, but to that point, you know, down next to Walmart in that area where it's not so much foot traffic, as we're trying to build this area out to be more about, you know, like he said with the twenty-four-forty plan, connectivity, walkability, that type of thing. It just, for me, it just, it just doesn't seem like it, it's the right fit for that location, not necessarily for our town.
When I mentioned next to big box, it's not literally next to it. It's in the, in the area.
Yeah.
Because again, modern self-storage, since it is all internal, all one building, it doesn't look like a storage facility. It blends in. We always follow the building facade, the code facade that every municipality wants. We can look at some other land, but there's a price that we can pay for land and a price we can't pay. And a lot of the other land we're looking at, they're asking too much. So we settled on this one because it works for our purposes. And basically, every storage facility we've ever built across nine states, across the Southeast and Midwest, all of them have been in more heavily trafficked area because that's what the customer wants. They don't want to drive out to an industrial area.
So are more of them closer to big-box stores or subdivisions?
I would, I mean, it's hard to say what percentage, but I would say most modern self-storage is closer to, actually, you know, I really can't say. It's close to where people live and where people traffic, which is retail areas. We try to get a happy medium.
Did you look at any track of land on Highway ninety-six?
I don't believe so. We were looking up and down Highway one hundred because that's heavily trafficked area where a lot of the growth is and where a lot of the retail is.
Have you looked at that area where the, in front of Walmart?
Didn't find any suitable land for sale in our price range there.
I believe it is for sale right there in front of Walmart.
Walmart often has an REA written into it where you can only put certain uses in front of it. And so we've run into that before.
That would be a good easy-
Well, that's, that is true, but Walmart doesn't own the land in front of their building.
Okay.
They only own a fifty-foot easement to get back to their building.
Do we know what the price for that land is?
No comment. I will say this. If, and I don't know that it's if, if or when it's gonna happen, but the largest subdivision in the city is gonna be built out Highway ninety-six. And there is tons of land out there. So I can't imagine that if you truly did your homework or your group did your homework and that humongous subdivision might be out there. There's already four or five other subdivisions pretty well contiguous to that that are under construction, under development. I don't know why y'all didn't look at that area. Maybe y'all didn't know those subdivisions were going out there.
There are a lot of different factors that go into, that go into putting a ten-million-dollar self-storage facility in. And it's a science and an art. We don't just have an Excel spreadsheet where we put the population growth and a couple other break points in there and press enter, and then it says yes or no. We have to drive the area, look at the area, and from our research and from the other twenty-five deals we've done, that's a good area.
Board, if I may, we have this matter before us, which we're called on to vote. It's rezoning, so you have discretion on whether to approve a rezoning or not. And we've had a robust discussion. I would say that they have an application and have requested this, and we just need to respond. We should not and do not need to get into a discussion about where they should or shouldn't locate their facility. That's a business decision. They have consultants that tell them what property is good and what property is not that are far smarter than us in this room. And so I would, I would urge that we keep on topic, and you can, you've, I think you've all talked now, and you can use your discretion in the vote whether you think it's a good rezoning for the city or not. And it's as simple as that, I think.
Yes, sir.
Was that a call to question? If there's no more additional questions, I'll ask Mr. Ross to call the vote. Mr. Ross.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Motion to deny carries fi- four-zero, sorry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
New Business, eleven B, resolution thirty-four twenty-four, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to name a consultant for professional design services for historical village park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Senator.
Thank you. Kim Lee Horn won the award for our selection panel as the best firm to proceed with this project. And they came out and did a presentation this evening, but if, we would like the board's approval to move forward with this, with this firm. Thank you.
Sir, any questions or discussion?
I would like just a clarification, since I'm still relatively new to this role. What's the process for a project like this as far as what this body will have influence on as this project moves forward? Like, what's the next thing we'll talk about with this and so on and so forth?
We will bring a contract with a scope of work inside. It's really imperative we have approval before we even go there. There's no reason for us to spend any more time if the board does not want us to. So the next is be getting the contract and getting the scope and deciding the next steps.
And is it at this, is it at that stage when we kind of start to narrow down the overall cost of the project and all of that?
Shortly thereafter. I mean, we would, a lot of things, you get in, you think it's gonna cause something, and you get in the mud and then you're not running and stuff.
I understand things change. I mean, I just, it, I personally like the idea of the project. I think it'll be a great addition to the city. Just from a fiscal responsibilities perspective, it's always just nice to have some idea of what we're getting into.
Right. And there, there will be, every expenditure will be laid out for the board, and I will have a number in the budget. But it's, right now, we're trying to see what that number would be and kind of get an idea of the design we want.
Thank you.
So when the project comes to us from Kim Lee Horn, if we approve them, they'll have an estimate for their process. So we'll be approving to allow them to go through the process. At the end of that process, it probably has a scope of work and an idea of what it should cost to build that project, and that's what we'll explore, building that project now. But I agree, as like we said in the workshop of, it's overwhelming. We had the fire, fire station group, police station group, we have the rezoning ordinance, and just, you know, I have confidence in you, but just so much coming at us at once. Like, where's all this money coming from? And it's all great things. I hope we can accomplish everything, but it just is scary. And I know we'll go through that process, but if we're gonna go down the road, we want to make, I would love to be able to say, we're gonna sign with Kim Lee Horn, we're gonna pay them, and at the end of it, we're gonna start construction. We're gonna have grants, we're gonna have this, and so I'm sure we'll talk more into that in the future, but just kind of echo it, too. It seems like a lot, but it's exciting a lot.
And if the board chooses to put on brakes on any of these projects, so pray.
You're our guy. Any additional questions or discussions?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero. Item eleven C, resolution thirty-five twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the Fire Department of Fairview, Tennessee to participate in public entity partners and a safety partners matching grant program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Chief Hughes. Will me just say this is a grant we get, I mean, if we've gotten it every year I've been here. It just subsidize their equipment for the firefighters.
Is there an amount that we applied for or is there a cap?
It's fifteen hundred dollars.
Fair enough. First and second, any additional discussion or questions? Mr. Ross.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero. New Business, eleven D, resolution thirty-six twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative LLC and the City of Fairview, Tennessee. Mr. Greer.
We had a joint work session where TPUDC presented a presentation for our- for our new zoning ordinance. Uh, included in your packet tonight is the contract that was, uh, agreed upon. Mr. Carter reviewed the contract, made a couple amendments to, to the contract. Those amendments are included in the contract that is within your packet. One item that I know that you will note is, uh, the fee is a not-to-exceed number. Uh, it is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, not-to-exceed. Part of that fee was included in this next, uh, fiscal year twenty-five budget for our department. The back half of that fee will be included in our next budget. There is a scope of services that's laid out fairly plainly, uh, as appendix A. And it walks through a, a good bit of what their intention is and how they plan to interact with our community and to interact with our staff and elected officials to help create the best zoning ordinance for the City of Fairview that we can to help, uh, our city continue to develop and grow, but in a, in a smart and healthy way. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve with McDonald, second, by Johnson. Questions or discussion? I will, I'll just pre-comment. It's exciting. It's, um, it's long overdue, and I know it'll be, um, a long and tedious process, but I think the end of it will be a very rewarding for our new zoning ordinance for our staff and, and for submittals and for review and all the good things. So very, so very excited about this. So thank you, Mr. Greer, for pu- for pushing on this. I think we, you probably had almost fifteen applications, went through interview, review process, and made a selection, so it's kind of, he's been working on it for quite some time. And this group is a local group that has done a lot of municipalities around us and has a lot of history and background in the area, and so very, very excited about this. Anything else?
And just not to make it seem like it's, yeah, we're just kind of breezing over this, but this is a big deal. This is gonna be great for the city. I'm looking forward to it as well.
Glad to finally have it done. Once this vote goes through.
Mr. Ross.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Item twelve, roundtable, mayor and commissioners, Commissioner McDonald.
Uh, just, I know, Mr. Ross, you said thank you to everybody but yourself, and I think you deserve a round of applause, um, for, uh, sit there, I was there for most of it, and to, to just go through that event with, from a, from the perspective of just someone in attendance, no issues whatsoever. There was no lines for bathrooms or for any, I mean, it just went as about as well in my mind as an event could go, and I understand how much time and effort you put into it and your team, so hats off to you guys. And also getting the sponsorship that you did, it was just that list of sponsorships blew my mind with how many of the larger corporations that, why are they doing something with Fairview, but you convinced them to do so, so I appreciate that. That's all.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Richard, really, thank you for not only that, but for everything you do on a daily basis. I wasn't here for the, for the event last week as I was on vacation, but I did check out, uh, lots of it on Facebook Live, so. And, uh, definitely looked like a wonderful event that I've been to many, many times over the years, uh, and just thank you again.
Commissioner Hall?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Chris, thank you for, that was, you, you knocked my thunder down tonight.
He deserves, he deserves a rerun. Go ahead.
I costed Richard didn't thank himself, so, uh, anyway, it was a fantastic, it gets better every year, and it was a good night. I was here from two-thirty till eleven when I drove out, finally got out of one hundred, so it was a long hot day. And anyway, I really enjoyed it. Uh, you know, everybody says that I shouldn't have been out there for my health, but, uh, it, sometimes mentally, it helps to, to do something like that, so. Anyway, here again, I want to thank all the employees. Thanks for your service out here tonight. I appreciate you being here. I think Sarge is gone already, but I do thank all of our city employees. That's all I have for the night.
Thank you, sir. And I'll echo what everyone has, has said. Thank you, Mr. Ross, and all staff. It was an all-hands-on-deck event, and, and from an outsider looking in, it seems to flow so flawlessly and seamlessly. I'm sure you were running crazy all day and months before, but, um, it was tremendous. And I think events like that are what continue to kind of hold the core of Fairview and the community, sense of community and the people together. And sitting out there watching the fireworks and watching it fill up is, it was a special day. It was fun, and you work hard to make that happen, so thank you very, very much. That's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless you guys want to make, wait for the mayor to get here. We're done.